Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Landale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to conduct the roll call.
All right, good evening, Mayor Protem Cuevas.
Present.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The next item on our agenda is our ceremonial portion. I'm gonna ask the flag salute is gonna be conducted by Mr. Pat Kearney, followed by a prayer of inspiration by Reverend Don Smoller from Restoration Life Church.
Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board and everybody who's here. We're honored to start this meeting in prayer as we see God we trust. And I was reminded earlier today in Scripture, Mark, Chapter 10, Blind Bartimaeus. I'm sure many of us know about it. Two things I just wanna bring to light. His life was changed. He was focused on begging at the streets because of his blindness. And when he heard Jesus was coming through town, he changed his focus. And what he did was cry out. And so that blindness, Jesus heard his need. And so he knew, Bartimaeus knew, he was the only one that could help his problem. We're all either going into a problem, we're in a problem, or we're coming out of a problem. That's what life is. Tonight, we're gonna have things that come up. There'll be problems we need to deal with. There's times when Bartimaeus, I'm sure, his life had been totally wrecked by his blindness. And by being changed, his whole life would be changed. He could work then, he wouldn't have to beg. So it was his faith that healed him, Jesus said. And so when we look at, sometimes, there's always gonna be someone who's gonna throw fire, water onto our fire, as they did for him. They said, "Don't cry out, leave him alone." But Jesus heard him, and he stopped. And he healed him because of his faith. Let's pray. Father, we come before you because we do trust. And there's much work to be done, not just here in this room, but also in the city in general and abroad, in this nation and the world. So I pray tonight for unity, because we know a house that is divided will fall. I pray for peace, the peace that you described, that goes beyond all understanding, that when we're in those moments, we can have that peace. And I pray for wisdom. The knowledge is there, the information is gonna be presented tonight, but it's the council members here that desire your discernment on their lives, to give wisdom in the choices they're about to make for the betterment of the city and the people. I thank you so much, in the name of the Father, His Son, Jesus Christ, and the Holy Spirit, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend for joining us tonight. Thank you for the words of inspiration. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our lieutenant, or sergeant, rather, Justin Smith.
Sergeant, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for October 17th through November 6th. I'll start with some notable investigations. On October 26th of this year, Deputy Fugino was on routine patrol when he saw suspicious vehicle that was illegally parked in a closed parking lot. Deputy Fugino contacted the four occupants of the vehicle and ultimately conducted a consensual search of the interior of the vehicle. During the search, he found an unregistered firearm. All four occupants of the vehicle were arrested for various weapons violations. On October 18th, Deputy Vazini was conducting a patrol check near 147th Street and Inwood Avenue. She conducted a traffic enforcement stop of a vehicle for a vehicle code violation. During her investigation, she conducted a lawful search of the interior of the vehicle and located suspected methamphetamine and suspected fentanyl. The driver was arrested for drug sales charges and booked at South Los Angeles Station. There was a significant incident that I'll go over. On October 18th, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Department, Major Crimes Organized Retail Theft Task Force conducted an operation in the city of Landale. The operation was directed towards identifying and apprehending people who commit thefts from retail establishments and then steal the stolen merchandise for a profit. During the operation, detectives observed potential theft suspects parked a reported stolen vehicle in an inconspicuous location near a retail establishment in the city of Landale. Uniform deputies who were standing by attempted to detain the occupants of the reported stolen vehicle. The individuals fled on foot, and the deputies followed close behind. A containment was established where two of the three individuals were located and detained with the help of the L S D K-9 Services Detail and the helicopter. Also, during the reporting period, the motorcycle enforcement deputy issued approximately 110 citations for various vehicle code violations. That number includes seven for loud or modified exhaust. And of those seven for louder modified exhaust, three were referred to what's called the state referee for inspection for emissions-related violations. This concludes my report today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the report.
Okay, thank you for the report. I see we have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions, just a comment. I wanted to thank Deputy Duseno. I did spoke to him, or speak to him at one of our events. And there's, you know, some, I guess, gang-affiliated activity that they had helped a few residents who have banded together, so he's been in contact with them. So I wanna thank him for reaching out to the residents and giving them advice and making himself available for that.
Thank you, I'll pass on the word. And now it's my distinct honor and pleasure to introduce our newly appointed captain, Captain Nicole Palomino.
Welcome, Captain.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nicole Palomino, and I am honored to stand before you today as the newly appointed captain of South Los Angeles Station. I am grateful for this opportunity to serve the community and work alongside each of you in our shared goals of public safety, ensuring businesses are able to thrive, and giving the residents a voice. First and foremost, I would like to express my deep appreciation to you for selecting me as the captain and entrusting me with this significant responsibility. I understand the importance of this role, and I am committed to protecting the residents and fostering a sense of security within the community. I am humbled by your dedication and passion for your work and aim to understand your priorities and contribute to your objectives. I come to this position with almost 24 years of law enforcement experience under my belt, having served at several patrol stations throughout my career at various ranks, including South Los Angeles Station. I know there is a lot of work ahead of us, and there will be many challenges along the way. But we will face these challenges together and remain steadfast in strengthening the community and all the wonderful people that call this beautiful place home. I want you to know that you are supported by me and the devoted men and women at South Los Angeles Station that stand alongside me. I am grateful for their sacrifices and commitment to keeping the community safe. I am excited to see what the future holds and look forward to building a strong partnership with each of you. I know that nothing worthwhile comes easy, but I will work to earn your trust and respect through my actions and unwavering dedication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, thank you, Captain. We really are honored to have you as our new captain, and we look forward to working with you. We know we're gonna do some great things. And I wanted to say, on behalf of this council and the 32,000, maybe 40,000 residents here in the city of Landale, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything they want to add?
I just, I feel like we should have another coffee with the cop, just so we can introduce you to the community, so if that's possible.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, that's right. And now, standing in for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, put your hands together for City Manager. Fire Department. Who are you standing in for?
The Fire Department.
Fire Department, the Fire Department. They couldn't make it tonight, but you're gonna give a public safety report for the Fire Department?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is the County of Los Angeles Fire Department. Landale Statistics for October, incidents by category. The Battalion Chief could not make it because they got called away on a big incident. So we have one call for a fire for this month, three rescue and emergency medical service incidents, five service calls, six good intent calls, seven false alarm, false calls, and nine special incident-type calls. And that concludes tonight's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moving our agenda along, today is a special day because we get to celebrate, along with the Cooks family, 100 years of service to the city of Landale from Cooks Doors and Windows. And they're joining us tonight. I'm gonna ask some Bob and Jim Cook, if they can join us at the podium. This is special because it's 100 years. You know, you don't celebrate this every day, right? Every 100 years. Not very minute. So I wanna introduce to you Bob and Jim Cook to the podium. In 1992, you can have a seat if you'd like, just from, I'm gonna read just a little bit about you. In 1992, Albert Cook, his wife and their son Chuck, or Charles, moved to California from Zerlin, Iowa. In 1923, Bert Cook founded Cook's Lumber and Hardware. His son Chuck graduated from Lou Zinger High School in Landale in 1938 and joined his father in business. That was the beginning of the family legacy. After Bert passed in 1958, Chuck continued in the family business, followed by Bob and Jim Cook in 1979 and 1980 respectfully. In 2000, the hardware store was phased out to expand to the showroom to concentrate on doors, windows, and finished materials. Chuck passed away in 2006, leaving the business to Jim and Bob. Dedicated to carrying on the legacy, the business celebrated its 100th year anniversary on October 8th, 2023, since its original founding of Cook's Lumber and Hardware in 1923. Cook's Doors and Windows continued the tradition of supplying the community with a quality work product using the knowledge and the business expertise that has successfully carried them through 100 years of serving Landale, the County of Los Angeles, and the South Bay area. Therefore, on behalf of the Landale City Council, we acknowledge the, and we congratulate the Cook family on this exciting 100-year anniversary milestone. You have much to be proud of. Thank you for being part of the city of Landale's history and a leader in the business community. May you continue in your success in the years ahead, and may the legacy of Bert continue for generations to come. Congratulations on 100 years anniversary. And we do have a little plaque of appreciation for you. And I'm gonna ask the council to join us at the podium. We'll take a little picture. And we'll make it official.
Nice, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here tonight. It's a long story. I mean, I don't know where to begin, but, you know, Dad was always proud of being from Landale when losing her high. You know, he spent his whole life here, which was great. And my grandfather too, and he passed away here once they moved from Missouri to Iowa. And then Bob and I took over, you know, like they said, in the early 2000s after my dad passed away. And we're very fortunate that my brother's son and my daughter are both involved in the company now. So we're looking for year 101. So I think we can make that, and we're gonna do it. And we're just, you know, we've always been tied into the city of Landale. My dad was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. He was president two or three times, sponsoring Little League, you name it. We try to help out. So anyway, so thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to see everyone. And I wanna thank all the officers who see everybody here tonight. Thank you for all your help. It's been great. Fortunately, we haven't had to use you too much. Anyway, so thank you very much for the plaque, and we'll hear for your year 101.
You're welcome. Congratulations again.
Okay, all right, Robert, thank you.
Now, as part of our oral communications, we have a special guest tonight that I wanna introduce first, I wanna, because I know she has another event, even though it's late to attend. I wanna introduce you to the hardest-working Assembly Member in the state of California, our very own, and matter of fact, not only our own Assembly Member representing Landale, but former resident here in the city of Landale and a former planning, I mean, what was it, Cable Commissioner in the city of Landale. Ladies and gentlemen, put your hands together and welcome the Honorable Tina McKinner, Assembly Member of California State Legislature.
Good evening. It was the Cable Commission, and it was the Neighborhood Watch Committee appointed by then-Mayor Hoffman. So I thought I'd mention that, too. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember, and Landaleans. My name is Assembly Member Tina McKinner, and I am proud to represent Landale and the West Side and South Bay cities and communities of Los Angeles County in the 61st Assembly District. I would like to first start out by thanking all of the Landale employees for their hard work and keeping the city together. Thank you. I was elected to the California State Assembly in June of 2022 during a special election and was re-elected to a full term in, to the Assembly in November of last year. This is my first year, and I'm so honored to serve you. But I am not a stranger to the South Bay because I've been working and living in this community most of my adult life. Again, I raised both of my sons right here in the city of Landale. They both attended Landale High School. Yay, go Landale! In 2009, I began serving the Assembly, Assembly Member Steve Bradford as his district director, representing the South Bay cities of Inglewood, Landale, Hawthorne, and Gardena. Years later, I would serve as the Chief of Staff to former Assemblywoman Autumn Burke, whose district I now represent. I served that position with your wonderful mayor. I've been working with the mayor and a few of the city council members for years and looking forward to the continued partnership. This year, we planned our third back-to-school fair for the children in our neighborhood. We planned one right here in the city of Landale. And I'm proud to say we serviced over 1,200 children, making sure that they started school with confidence and that they just really felt good about going back to school. We also hosted our first emergency preparedness fair in the city of Hawthorne. We had vendors from utility companies, healthcare providers, fire and police departments to help us plan for an emergency. We just, we just had our first hurric quake, you guys. So we know with this extreme weather, due to climate change, we must prepare our communities for disasters. I plan to host this event every year, so I look forward to letting you guys know when the second annual emergency preparedness fair will happen. In my first year in office, I had 11 bills sent to the governor and eight signed, most with bipartisan support and many with the support of legislators who would run away from anything and anyone claiming to be progressive. How did I do this? Well, the important thing is to look, looking past the labels of progressives or conservatives and finding common values that we all share. There are common values, these common values help me pass legislation like AB 1418, which will end predatory nuisance evictions that landlords don't want and which currently increases the state housing and homelessness crisis. AB 1418 will end this predatory practice and protect property owners and protect tenants from frivolous evictions, helping to further stabilize the rental house market. These common values also helped me pass AB 1, which will give non-supervisory legislative staff a choice to organize. I'm really, really proud of that one. Also, we passed AB 937, which will ensure that parents are given a fair opportunity to reunify their children by extending the timeline and provide parents with 24 months of services as long as the court determine that the reunification is not in the detriment of the child. The child welfare system is designed to return children to their parents safely and not to permanently separate from their parents. AB 937 will provide a reasonable timeframe to support family reunification efforts across California. The last bill I would like to talk about is Senate Bill 4. It streamlines the bill, you guys might not like me about this one, but I hope you forgive me because the state took a little privilege of setting some statewide rules on building. SB 4 streamlines the building process for faith-based institutions and nonprofit colleges that want to build affordable housing projects for low-income families by allowing them to build multifamily housing, regardless of local zoning restrictions. This proposed legislation also guarantees by right of approval of projects as long as they are consistent with all the objective standards of the jurisdiction and comply with listed environmental protections. The approval process ensures that the SEQA Act cannot be misused against these projects. SEQA is a critically important law for protecting the environment from projects such as refineries that pollute natural resources and jeopardize health. We don't have to worry about that in Landale because we don't have any refineries. And so we don't have any junior colleges either. But we might have some faith-based institutions that might wanna build. I also brought $417 million home to build the Inglewood Transit Project. It will help with the environmental footprint and Ingle, and put Ingle, and put it simply, Inglewood needs help with traffic. We will be looking at having the opening and closing ceremonies of the Olympics, which will affect all of this region. And we wanna make sure that we help with some of those traffic issues because we know it's gonna be pretty clogged. Well, I can tell you guys, I'm so proud of my first year in office. You know, for all the doom and gloom reported by the Golden State by some news outlets, our state is leading in the nation in new business growth, new job growth, and new investments in clean energy. I am optimistic about the opportunities that the South Bay has now and in the years to come. I want you to know that I am your partner in Sacramento to help keep our region and our state's economy strong. My team and I are just a phone call away or an email away. Please don't hesitate to call on us when you need us. My field rep here, Haley Hutt, represents my office, and she's here in the city. She'll be here at all of the council meetings, most of the council meetings. And so if you need us, please don't hesitate to call us. Thank you.
Yeah, that's in order. Assemblywoman, I wanna thank you for all your hard work. I mean, you're off to a wonderful start. I mean, we, you know, we keep score, you know, in the legislature. Eight out of 11, you know, that's, that's a great score because we know how hard it is for, once you go through all that process and it gets to the governor's desk, he may already have his mind made up long before it got to his desk, right? And to have eight out of 11, you know, passed, that says something. And we wanna thank you. That says a lot of hard work was put behind that. We wanna thank you for that. And thank you for representing the city of Landale so well. And we look forward to working with you and partnering with you again on some other projects as well. And then let Inglewood know that we got next. That we got next, I made a note. We got next, but we really appreciate you. Anyone have anything they wanna add? Thank you, Assemblywoman.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Haley. All right, let's, let's continue with our oral communications. Anyone else who would like to speak to this body under oral communications? You can do so at this time. You don't have to wait for your name to be called. You just, like Joy, and just approach the podium and...
Thank you, I'm happy to be here. I am the field rep for Senator Stephen Bradford, and we're SB 35. So we're in our district right now. We're always here for you. If there are any state agencies that, Assemblywoman McKinner's office, call them first, and if they can't help you, they can call me. No kidding. But I do wanna, we're very excited about our turkey giveaway, turkey and pork roast giveaway on November 1. giveaway on November the 21st. First come, first served, but we're very excited. We're partnering with the El Camino Foundation. So that is, it'll be at Camino, at El Camino, coming on the Manhattan Beach side. And it's, we're gonna start at 10 o'clock and we'll have turkeys and pork roast or pork roast.
Oh, okay. Okay. Because we was about to start lining up now. You said in.
As long as they last. And we're very excited. Senator Bradford will be here at the next meeting on the 20th to give his legislative updates. So, thank you for having me.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this body under oral communications? This is it. Yes, sir.
Is there a little discommunication there?
No, this is it.
So I'm Ray Haller, homeowner in southwest Longdale. And just with a quick comment to thank everybody who came out to support our friend and neighbor Jay Gould and also Josh Stanford in making sure that Metro did not plow over his rights to his property. So I know, and I know it's more than just some of the people or all the people, I didn't see everybody, I'm sure, but some of the people are over here in the room I know also. So I just wanted to say, I really appreciate that. I'm not the only one in Longdale who really appreciates that and I thank you very much for supporting our neighbor.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Holly Osborne from Redondo Beach. And I'm, of course, I'm going to talk about the Green Line, but I've been, previously presented only one of these charts at a Metro P&amp;P meeting and the same one at a South Bay Cog District meeting, but Longdale did not have a representative there, so these should be all new and not boring. What precipitated these charts is that Supervisor Holly Mitchell wanted more time to take input from the public and also the South Bay Cog had said they were going to arrange some tours. The tours that Metro made in the past initially ignored the parts of the row where it would be the most difficult to build. There are three such areas on the row for Longdale and Redondo, and I'm going to talk about one of them, the area south of 170th in Longdale where the road narrows especially at 172nd. Now, this is the diagram that appeared in the DEIR, okay? This makes it look very benign and flat. I'll tell you, it's not this way at Mr. Gould's property, but I do want you to notice that it takes 31 feet to insert the LRT. Okay, the light rail transit. Now, this is the, what is more representative at Mr. Gould's property. There is a steep cliff, a steep embankment. And Mr. Gould's property is here and then there, extended from it is the maintenance area and under that maintenance area are four pipelines. Those have been built there a long time ago, the latest one in the 1960s. And there was a road up there, Condon, an extension of Condon. I've got the maps that show it. And so the road was already paved, the pipelines are five feet down. One of those is the ones that had the anomaly, the one that's closest to the edge. The anomaly has been found and fixed, but this was a paved road. Mr. Gould did not put the pavement on the road and Mr. Gould did not put the wall there. BNSF did. If you didn't have a wall there and if you didn't have pavement, you'd have dirt and a good rain would wash and expose the pipe as happened in Redondo in a similar situation. So you should be rewarding him and thanking him for keeping that wall there and having, and be glad that the pavement is there and not castigating him the way Metro has. So anyway, I wanted to say that this is, this area where the maintenance area is, is 14 feet. That's where nobody can build, but that's where the pipelines are. Okay. Now, I said you needed 31 feet for the LRT, so what I did was I put in a 30-foot wide, big dashed area. You can see that it completely covers the cliff. It narrows his property, brings his house closer to the precipice. I think people in, in Dallas, New Orleans Peninsula... Okay. I won't say anything. I'll just show you. It doesn't fit. And don't castigate Mr. Gould. And I did just want to say too, that Torrance Logistics was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Osborne.
I guess they're talking about me. So here's what Metro proceeded to do. They're sending bad letters. Holly was over there today. She wanted to get on the property. I wouldn't let her on the property. The road that was made there, they say it's 20 feet. It was actually 30 feet. Even the guys that are working on the oral lines said this road has double-layered tar and it also has a ground rust on it. So when you put that down, that meant it was a road all the way to that wall. So I had the 30 feet there. Every time I talk to Metro, they change what I say and make me look like the bad guy. Every single time. They told me I have my annex and everything, what I do, they tell me I'm a liar. They keep attacking me and the only one that saved me are these guys right here. Without them, I wouldn't have anything. And you, and all you guys. And I call you guys and I know it's, but we gotta stop them from talking shit about me. I've been here all my life. I know what was built out there. I know what the roads were like. I know that the road went all the way out there. If our road goes all the way out there, they can't build their train. I, I know, we, somehow, you have to figure out, like, like the, the guys from the Metro said, these pipes were underneath the road. And they gave you the road? They did give us the road. It was 30 feet. And then you got, somebody cut it to 20. It was a 30-foot road. And they said these pipes wouldn't have been here. They had to be under a road. And I said, yeah, this was Condon Avenue. He says, this is the asphalt. I took pictures of it. He said, this is the road, this is, should have been your land. And I've already won the fence. They've already said that it's my fence and they're still gonna come after us. And I don't know what to do. I'm tapped out money-wise. I just handed my attorney another $5,000 today. I'm the only one putting money into this. I'm putting a lot of money in this and a lot of time. And it ain't for me. I'm gonna die. It ain't for me. It's for you guys. If you can't see that, you don't understand it. And somebody has to stand up and say, stop talking to Mr. Gould like that. Stop sending these nasty letters. They sent nasty letters. Oh, they're gonna tear down my property, tow all my cars, do this. They don't stop. They're never gonna stop until somebody stops them. Either the city attorney does it here, sends them a letter, just says, leave them alone. Because I have not done anything wrong here. I have not done anything. I've been honest with you guys. I told them about the graves 20 years ago. I've told them about everything. They will not stop until they have me dead. That's their goal. That's their goal. You see that at the meeting? How many of those Metro guys were around me? Only Sean was and a couple other people. They want me dead and that's the only way they're gonna win. And we're gonna let them do it because my wife didn't want me here again tonight. You know that?
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, ma'am.
Colleen Viegas, 163rd Street. I have one issue, but I'll save it for another meeting. I just wanted to, because it can't be said enough, thank the city council members, the mayor, city manager, Officer Smith, and the other sheriffs for all of their support over the last few weeks for the Goulds and the other residents living in that part of the row because it's been wonderful to have your support. So thank you again.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to speak to this body under oral communications? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and bring it up to the DIAS. For any comments from the council, let's start with Hoffman-Gorman. Yes, ma'am.
First off, thank you to everyone that came out tonight to join us at council meetings. That's number one. And number two, thank you to those that got up to speak. Joy, thank you for reminding us about the turkey and the pork roast giveaway. And I saw that you did bring flyers. Those flyers will be available here at City Hall. We'll make sure of it so that our residents can take them as well. Maybe, Sean, we could put that on the city website as well and use that avenue of our social media to get the word out as well. To all the people that came out to speak to about Metro and the support of Jay Gould, thank you, all of you, for standing with us against Metro. We're all in agreement here. Their numbers are not correct. There's not 60-some percent of us that are for Metro. We are not. And Dr. Osborne, I appreciate receiving these ahead of time, so while you're talking, I can actually be seeing them. So thank you for, for providing those to us today. As all of you are aware, when it comes to Metro, I cannot represent because I also am going to be affected by Metro. And so I have to watch what I have to say, but I want to just, again, thank all of you that got up to speak on Jay's behalf and for him. The city is behind and willing to do as much as we can, as well as the Sheriff's Department when it comes to supporting Jay. So, and, and the issues there at his house. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it to my colleague on my right.
Counselor Pat Currie.
I think Rhonda said it the best. Thank you for speaking tonight. I have a question for either the city manager or city attorney. Is there some kind of legality, we can send Metro a letter to back off on our residents or is that something his own attorney have to do?
I think the city manager could certainly consider that. And despite not being able to represent the city on the matter, I'll consult with him on what his options might be. Thank you, sir.
At that, I'll pass it on.
Counselor Suarez.
I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I think my colleagues said, said kind of what we're all feeling at this point, but I did want to bring up with Holly, there was supposed to be a tour with the South Bay Cities Council of Government. From what I understand, Metro was the one providing the buses and they sent a short or last-minute notification that the buses weren't working. So that's as much as I know at that point for that tour. But I know they're definitely, and for some reason too, the meeting got canceled. So I'll try and look into it further on why, but I know that they are gonna go over, at least virtually, which I don't think has the same effect as actually walking along there, but I'll try and get more information. That way you are, you guys are updated. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Madam pro, Tim Quavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Dr. Osborne, thank you for your charts. They kind of helped me understand what's going on in that area. Thank you for your time on doing that. And my colleagues already mentioned that thanks to the residents supporting Jay on his issue with Metro, I wish more of our residents would get involved in the same, backing him up. And hopefully, those that are listening to us will get in touch with Jay and see what we could help, how we could help him. Thank you, Assemblymember McKenna, for coming in and doing your presentation. And that's all for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to thank those who came out to speak tonight, in particular, those who spoke in support of Jay and the Goulds family. We do stand strongly behind Jay as we have from, from day one. We will continue to do so to make sure that Metro does right by the residents of Longdale. I did have the opportunity to, Dr. Osborne mentioned the cliff. I had the opportunity to actually take my daughter, she had never been through that, that area. And she's 15, so she's inquisitive on these things, right? And so, and I showed her the properties and, you know, the proposal, what have you. And we talked, she saw the cliff that you described as a cliff and I explained to her that there's gonna be three tracks, in particular, south of 170th Street. And she's no engineer by any, any stretch of the imagination, but she, her question is how you gonna do that with, you know, that narrow, especially that part where it gets closer to Artesia, you know, what have you, closer to the homes on 170th, well, south of 170th or what have you. So I just don't understand, and I'm no scientist myself, but as far as the measurements as concerned and the math, I, I don't see how, how they get it. Maybe some scientific engineers know how to structure it in such a way. I just don't see it and my daughter, 15 years old, didn't see it as well. But yes, I do say the more people, once they know about this project, they understand the plight of the Goulds, they need to get behind and show, show support so that we can make sure. Because it's all about, I mean, the project's gonna be the project, right? And we know that this is not a project of the city of Longdale. It's a Metro's project and they have vast authorities and powers given to them by the California Legislature years and years ago. And so, and this is a project that they're looking to do for, they're looking to do a lot of projects like this, not just Metro, but other metropolitan transportation agencies throughout the state to address not just transportation, but the housing piece that go with it or what have you. We just want to make sure that everything is done right by the city of Longdale. You know, and that's all we've asked for from, from day one and will continue to be vigilant in that regards. And with that, I just want to, again, want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And that's all I have. If there's nothing else, we will close public comments and bring it back to the DIAS and we'll continue our agenda. Thank you, everyone. So let's see, what's on our agenda? What's next? Okay. All right. Comments from council? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. From items on two through 10 is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
I plan to vote no on number five, so I don't know if that needs to be taken to a separate vote.
We, you want to do a separate vote on that one? Because it is an ordinance. Yeah, so let's pull that and do a separate vote because it's an ordinance. But for the balance of the consent calendar, what is the pleasure of the consent calendar?
So moved.
So it's been moved by Kearney that we approve the consent calendar, the balance of the consent calendar, rather. What is, any discussion on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. There's a second on the motion by Quavis.
And we're removing item number five.
Yeah, we're gonna remove item number nine, vote on that one separately.
Five.
Item five. Okay, will the council please vote?
Motion passes unanimously for the consent calendar with the removal of item number five.
Okay, now I will entertain a motion for number five, the second reading of the adoption of the ordinance, 120423. You don't have to read this again, right? No? Okay, yes, sir.
So you look for a motion to accept?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept.
Motion's been made by Kearney that we, that we approve such ordinance.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
For item number five from this consent calendar, the motion passes with Council Member Suarez voting no.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda is, under administration, item 11, update regarding Republic Services' service performance. Let's have the report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Republic Services is our waste hauler for the city of Longdale. They've been our solid waste hauler and recycling collection service franchisees since 2011. The term is from 2020 through 2026. The city has experienced some waste hauling deficiencies over the last 10 months and Republic is here to address these concerns this evening. So it'll be the recommendation that City Council receive and file this presentation. And whenever you approve, we'll have them come up to the podium and make their presentation.
Okay, let's see if there's any opening comments first. Any opening comments by the council?
I'll address that later.
Okay, let's do that.
After, after their presentation, I will respond.
Okay. Let's proceed with the presentation from Republic Services. Yes, sir.
Over this one, plenty loud and enough. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, City Manager Moore. My name is Devin Kincaid from Public Services. I am the general manager for the Gardena location. Signed to this division maybe about five months ago, to which there was already kind of brought to my attention, you know, lapses in service and performance. I want you to come here on behalf of Republic Services tonight to say that we understand those issues and that I personally will take the matters in hand to make sure that there's Last week, City Manager Moore and one of my superiors, Michael Selaya, had an opportunity to have a phone call and a conversation and brought up many available out of issues that need to be addressed. I've taken those issues, talked to my teams, and reassigned some individuals to make sure that we put action behind the things that we promised to, you know, get done. At Republic Services, you know, when it comes to the tearing through on customer service, we put that at the front and foremost. And quite frankly, we've not done the best job we can. I have extreme faith with the current team that we have in place and, you know, my purpose and my thought behind what I want to enact, that we will get things back to where they need to be. That is my promise. Working with some of the individuals currently in this room, in the citizens, we will get everything back to where it needs to be.
Okay, let's have a few questions. We might have three questions. Let's start with the council.
Not really questions, but comments.
Comments.
I'm getting inundated with residents with problems, and they are such simple fixes. When they take a cart, regardless of if it's on the sidewalk or in the street, put it back where you found it. If you've got it from the curb up on top in the parkway, put it back, right there. Don't leave it in the street. Sometimes they're senior citizens, and dragging it over the curb is a big deal. And yet, they want to be independent enough to take care of their own trash, all right? Many times, I follow behind your trucks, and I see trash falling, and it's not addressed. That's incorrect. The service out here, my family was self-employed for many years, and they were in large equipment. And so when we had a dump truck and a tractor, we kept our old one so that we had a backup. I've heard the excuse lately, oh, well, the truck has broke down, and that's why we couldn't get to pick up a whole quadrant's worth of trash. I'm sorry, your company is big enough, there should be a few extra trucks at the yard that they could trade out a truck to come pick up trash. Or how about the excuse that, well, this individual went home sick? These are really big issues, and we have a really good contract and have always had a good relationship with Republic. I brought up these concerns, goodness, about 16 months ago, and had a meeting with the previous Public Works manager, myself, and the leads, including Dawn, on a Zoom call. And we were told at that point it was going to get corrected. And what did we have right after that? We had the driver who urinated in front of a house up at 170th Street. We don't have time to get our act together. It needs to be done now because the service has gotten that poor in our neighborhood. And I don't know what you have to do to do that, but excuses are not working. Thank you for hearing me.
Anybody else?
No, you go ahead, then I'll go after you.
Okay. Wanda said they're not picking up the trash. We're getting people calling Republic, they're saying, well, we're training people for a week. Well, you know that the people go on vacation. I run a meat department, and I train my people a month, month and a half before. And being the same answer from Republic, oh, it's a new guy, they missed a whole route. How can you miss a whole route if you're on training? And then also, in the last contract, we were supposed to get new trucks out here with the tarp that, once you dump it, the tarp goes all over and holds the trash down. Because like Wanda says, on trash day at my house, I go out and pick trash in the street because they turn, have a blind eye to stuff behind them, and that's not right. We pay big bucks to have your company there, we expect the service to be 100%. And as she said, I understand, I talked to a couple of the drivers, said, well, we put the empty trash cans on the street so our drivers know that the street has been hit. Well, I have two drivers that have been there for 20 years, and they know when the street's empty. So the on the street, off the street, that, you know, like she said, there's seniors out there that can't pull those trash cans up. My neighbor can't pick it up. So you promised a moon, but the results are still failure. So I hope you're taking note and you fulfill your promise, that everything be corrected.
Sir.
I would like to have your business card, if you could give it to our city clerk before you leave, so that I have your telephone number, because I can tell you also the supervisors within Republic, they keep changing, and in keep changing, they never answer their phone. And the only way I can get through to Republic is to go through City Hall, and I sometimes like to take care of things myself.
Yes, ma'am.
But nobody is there to answer the phone.
Yes, ma'am. I have a stack of cards back there, I'll come grab and give you guys some.
Thank you.
The current supervisor that oversees the contract has been replaced. He's no longer with Republic Services. Going forward, that was raised later on, or earlier today, to state that the new individual will be brought to City Hall tomorrow to be introduced to the rest of the team.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then with regards to some of the concerns, are there current plans to purchase new equipment? And what's the timeframe looking for that?
Yeah, so one of the things, we've got to help our budgetary season, and one of the things that, not just Republic Services going through, not just this industry, but trucking across the nation right now is currently running into supply chain issues, where we want and have the money to purchase these vehicles, however, the vehicles are not available. You see one of the bigger companies currently, right now that we have recommended is currently out on strike, or I think that just came back. And our primary one that we purchased from is currently backed up through, quite frankly, 18 to about two years, 18 months, about two years.
And so, I guess to answer that question, it's another two years out from getting new equipment, or?
So within the next couple of years, we do have, you know, relatively a small portion of the fleet that's naturally gonna get replaced. However, we have already kind of notified individuals within our area representation and our regional representation that the vehicles will need to get replaced.
So first of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight to represent our Republic. I just have two observations, one of which I believe, well, actually, both of them boils down to communications, a lack of communications. There was an incident on one of the streets, I just happen to live on that street, where the trash wasn't picked up. And it wasn't just because the trash wasn't picked up. It wasn't picked up until the next cycle. So for a whole week, no one knew when the trash was gonna be picked up, which meant you didn't know whether to pull your trash cans in or to leave them out in fear of if you pull them in, the trash person's gonna come the next day, and then you're out, right? And you missed the opportunity to have your trash cans empty. So many people elected, some brought them in, and some kept them out. And those who kept them out, of course, the trash continued to be full. And of course, folks who go through the trash can, look for items, of course, look for that opportunity. And now you got trash everywhere that you wouldn't have if we simply communicated and that the residents know that to pull your trash cans back in, because the trash is not gonna be picked up for next week or what have you. I think that could have just been solved by some type of communications, because we didn't know when the trash cans were gonna be empty. Also, another one in the lines of communications, went into a merchant's place to visit him, and he explained to me that his recyclables hadn't been picked up, and that he's called a few times, and that they used to answer, he said, they used to answer my calls. They stopped answering my calls. Now, when I called him to ask him about picking up the recyclables, and he showed me the recyclables, and it wasn't just that the recyclables hadn't been picked up, the bin is overflowing, right? So he got all these recyclables, you know, just ready, you know, for a bin, for an empty bin, and he can't get a, not just an ETA, but he could not get anyone to respond to him. After he's called a few times and, for some reason, from his standpoint, they just stopped answering my calls or what have you. I was able to get on the line, and I spoke to one of the representative, Dawn, and they showed up. And I appreciate that, but it shouldn't take the mayor just walking in, you know, the merchant's place, and then making a call, and then your trash is picked up. Right. So it's just stuff like that, that communications. I don't know what he would have done about it, you know, but maybe bring out another trash can to put them in there. But the fact that he wasn't in communications with anyone was concerning to him. So if that's one of the things you guys can kind of focus on as well, we can appreciate that as well.
Sir, to address communication, I have plenty of cards, I can give one to every single one of you. If there's ever any issues, please let me know. The current supervisor that we have that's gonna be overseeing the contract specializes in customer service and will be very, very front-facing with the individuals of the city. The prior individual who's currently not with us, you know, had shortcomings, and we plan on rectifying that, whether it's through myself, the operation managers, or the supervisors themselves.
And the communications, if possible, should go to the residents, because even if you communicate with me, I can't knock on everybody's door and tell you to bring your trash cans in, because that's not part of what I do, right? I'm expecting you guys to do that, right? When I talked about communications. Yes, we need to know that as well, but the residents, the ones that need to know that your trash cans need to be pulled back in or leave them out, or whatever the case happened to be. But we appreciate it. Anything else?
I would just like to say thank you to Grace. If there has been somebody that has stood by the residents and heard them, it's Grace. And Grace, I appreciate the support in the issues with Republic. And I look forward to you communicating with Grace so that she can fill you in on what our residents are having for issues. Okay? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you once again. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Item 12, notice of completion for Public Works, Los Angeles Department Station. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's me again. So on May 1st, 2023, the City Council awarded a construction contract with G2K Construction to install the new automatic gates, fencing vehicle loop detectors, access keypads, block wall repair, and painting of the exterior of the sheriff's facility. And they did some work in Public Works as well. So the job has been finished, the punch list has been completed, and the staff recommends that the City Council accept the project completion by G2K Construction for the Public Works and L.A. Sheriff's Department Facility Improvement Project. Authorize staff to file the notice of completion with the county registrar, and authorize staff to release the 5% retention in the amount of $11,203.43 to G2K for the Public Works and Los Angeles Sheriff Department Facility Improvement Project.
Okay, so what is the? Any comments? Anyone have any comments on this item? Item? Yes, ma'am.
I thought the gate at the sheriff department was to put their patrol cars inside the cage, but lately I've been driving by, and their patrol cars are on the outside. Was that not what was going to be done?
Mayor, council, so because there's limited space, we thought it'd be more effective working with the sergeant and the sheriffs to put the patrol cars out front, and they could put their personal vehicles in the back. Or they can trade them off. It's just a little bit more challenging if they move the patrol car and they put their personal vehicle in, because there's limited space.
Well, isn't that how they broke into a patrol car because it was on the outside of the fence? Or was that something different?
We had a homeless individual, when the sheriff deputy was backing up, he was sleeping in another police car, the deputy's vehicle. It was to keep, that's why we had to add additional gating to keep people out of that parking area for the, we feel that it actually, in the end, it's a little better to have them outside, so the residents see the, it acts as a deterrent, so the residents can see the patrol cars out there, sitting out there, ready to go. And in fact, I've made comments on how to park them, so they look like they're ready to go out and respond.
Thank you.
Oh, one other comment. I hope that the updated facility, that's an invitation to our new captain, that's been maybe a couple days, a month at the new facility, I'll update it.
I did have just one comment, and I know I worked with the city manager on this. There were a couple residents that tried, I think at one point, I think there were staff shortages. Just want to make sure that it is accessible to the public for those that want to go there so that we can make the access, you know, I know there was a specific situation in that case, but it did come to my attention.
The facility has a gate when they're locked, and it also has an outdoor phone, so someone can call in the dispatch during operation hours. And it is accessible. Public Works staff made sure it was all accessible in means ADA and accessible for the public to get inside the, inside the open area where they meet with the sheriff deputies.
Okay. All right. So what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we accept. The project is being completed. And seconded by Suarez, any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Item number 13, authorize a new right-of-way use agreement with addendum for a city-owned conduit using the Crown Castle. Yes, ma'am.
That's me. On October 1st, 2018, the city and SUNYSIS entered into a right-of-way use agreement. It gave them permission to encroach over, under, and along the public right-of-way, and Exhibit A has a map showing that location. As of January 1st, 2019, Crown Castle became responsible for all the obligations as a result of an internal consolidation of various legal entities via a merger. So this agreement expired on September 30th, 2023, and a new right-of-way agreement was negotiated with new fees and terms. So the new right-of-way use agreement has a 15-year term with two sets of renewals, and the first year will be $5 per linear foot per year. The first renewal of the second five years will be $550, and then the third five years is $6 a square foot per year. And that totals a total conduit occupancy license fee of $297,000 over 15 years. So staff recommends that City Council approve the execution of the new right-of-way use agreement with Crown Castle Fiber, accept the conduit occupancy license fee of $5 a year over the next five years, with an increase to $550 per linear foot per year for the first five-year renewal, and another increase to $6 per linear foot per year for the second five-year renewal for a total conduit occupancy license fee of $297,000 over 15 years. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions on this item?
I do, sorry.
You do? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. How did we come up with the $5, $550, and $6? Is that what other cities are doing, or is that?
It was a negotiated amount, an increase over the last, the last term, which was about $3.60. I had a higher number, and we just came to mutual agreement at $5 with an increase, and it's actually higher than a lot of other entities.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I just want to add, this agreement, I worked on this agreement initially for Public Works under community involvement, and it was at 40 cents a linear foot. And we got it up, and Leah did a great job and staff in Public Works to push it up a little more. We have to be careful. We can't be accepted, as the city attorney will tell you, with these public utilities, because Crown Castle is large. So, but we got them to where we think it's comfortable, way better than 40 cents. It was 40 cents or something a few years back.
Yeah. Okay. $5 is better than 40 cents. Okay, any other questions on this item? What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
For item number 13, the motion passes unanimously.
Item number 14, recommendation to use the Motorola Solutions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. The staff report that you have before you is a continuation of the October 16th, excuse me, the October 16th staff, or council meeting, in which staff brought you the results of the RFP, in which we had petitioned to have bids for an automatic license plate reader camera. We chose Motorola Solutions slash Vigilant Solutions LLC as a company of choice. As you recall, the council did have some concerns and some questions about privacy issues, data retention rates, costs, and also potential misuse of these cameras. I put together a brief PowerPoint for you tonight to answer some of those questions and hopefully put your mind at ease. Additionally, I've invited representatives from LASD ASAP Unit, as well as from Motorola Solutions, to answer any technical questions or other questions that I can't answer to be with you. I'll go ahead and begin the presentation right now. We are talking about automatic license plate recognition cameras. Automatic license plate recognition cameras are designed to capture images of vehicles in a very in a very focused field of view, um, as they enter and exit the city. Uh, these cameras are mounted and designated high points in the city, um, to capture entry points and major thoroughfares within the city. Um, these are instrumental in reducing crime in a number of cities and we hope to do the same here. These, uh, these cameras are used for two particular reasons, uh, two particular purposes. Uh, as these images are captured, um, they're able to store and hold data which are able to be used against, uh, sheriff databases which contain hot lists. Uh, hot lists are stolen vehicles, felony wanted vehicles and other cars used in criminal activity. Um, by having this hot list generated on these sheriff databases, when one of these vehicles enters our city, our deputies will become aware that the criminal vehicle or vehicle used in a crime has entered the community. Um, not only is it good in crime prevention, but it can also be used for Amber Alerts and also for missing vehicles or missing persons. Um, the second point of, uh, that this, these cameras are useful is if a crime just occurred and we have limited information about the vehicle that left the city, the deputies have a point in time and a location, they can monitor those cameras and search all the vehicles and then run those plates to find out if that vehicle matches any known felonies. This here is a picture of a, one of the cameras, a picture of, taken by one of the, uh, automatic license plate recognition cameras. Uh, as you can see in the upper corner of the photograph, um, the image is only capturing the license plate and the rear of the vehicle. Um, there are no images taken of the occupants of the vehicle. And, um, I did want to state in terms of private, excuse me, privacy, uh, what we spoke about last week or last meeting with the mayor's concerns about, um, the information being hacked. Um, the information is not in the system. So when a license plate is run, um, when, for instance, somebody you're getting pulled over, your information is accessed through the deputy's use of the, uh, California database, the DMV's database. That information is not in the system in any way. This system simply takes pictures of license plates and stores them. It'll record a, a location, it'll record a place and time and deputies can use that information. They still have to do the legwork to find out who this person is. So if they know it was a black vehicle, four doors, Chevrolet, when they have a partial license plate, they can enter that information, find matching vehicles, but then they're still going to have to find who those owners are by checking the DMV database. So when they run that information, if there's a want suspect in the DMV database as a known felon, that'll give them a lead that they can follow up on. But your information, or even known felon's information's not going to be in the system. It is simply capturing license plates and a location and a point in time. So there's no privacy issues to concern themselves with and there's no, um, uh, there's no issues in terms of, of, uh, your information being hacked. Also, to address the privacy policy, as I said, uh, the data is, is held and only observed by law enforcement officials and only designated law enforcement officials. So no city staff or non-sworn officers even, even able to see this information. Uh, Sergeant Smith or some of his crew, unless they have a specific crime that they're investigating, they wouldn't be able to light the system. Only designated appointees are able to see this information. Um, that was solidified with, um, California Senate Bill 34, which was passed into law and requires full transparency of all automatic license plate reader usage by all communities. Um, also in addition to the handouts, I have included the City of Manhattan Beach's policy on privacy. Um, we would likely create one for the City of Longdale as well, should you approve this system. As you can see from this map, the green areas are cities with systems already in place. Uh, the red is Longdale, we're the only community in the South Bay that doesn't currently have an automatic license plate reader system. Some of the communities that currently use the Motorola, uh, system are Manhattan Beach, Torrance, Rancho Palos Verdes and Palos Verdes Estates. Uh, also Carson uses the same Motorola system as do other cities such as Lindwood and other communities in L.A. and certain county areas. One final thing I did not address in this, uh, in this PowerPoint, but it regarding pricing. Um, we did talk about the cost of this. The cost for this is prepaid, includes five years of licensing, which would have to continue after the cameras are purchased. But we are including five years of, of, uh, licensing fees in this estimate. If we chose to, we could extend that to 10 or 15 years. We could then use ARPA money and we could be paid for as long as we want to, but then of course that would increase the estimate, but, um, that is an option as well. So at this time, I did want to say that we do have our representatives from Motorola. We have, um, Mr. Louis Wershaw and Mr. Sean Heick. And we additionally have Deputy Sam Paul from the ASAP Unit with the Sheriff's Department if you have any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions? Start on this side first.
You know I always have questions.
Yeah, let's start with Ms. Quavis.
Couple of things.
Madam Pro temp.
You said, where do we store this data? DMV?
All, all data is owned by the Sheriff's Department and I can have, uh, Deputy Paul speak to that a little bit more, but that, that is, all belongs to the Sheriff's Department. They're keeping that. That's going to be in their clouds. They're the only ones with access to it. So city staff cannot get it, so the audience cannot get it. This is regulated by state law. Um, and we would have our own policy, retention policy as well. Um, but they, they currently have one in existence.
And then what happens to the data if we decide in five years not to use them anymore?
Well, it's only held for five years, so it, it's purged after that time.
Where does it go? I mean, I, I know it gets purged, but it has to go somewhere. Delete it, okay. So if we start 2023, by '28, you'll be deleting 23?
That's correct.
And then?
And the data is stored in Azure Gov, Microsoft Azure Gov.
Put that mic up for me. Make sure the audience can hear you.
I'm sorry, the data is stored in Microsoft Azure Gov.
And I just want to make sure it's not a red camera and that we inform our residents that we're putting this camera for their safety.
Correct. And the Senate Bill does require that, uh, everything is completely transparent, including the usage of these cameras. Um, but yeah, to, to speak to the misuse, these are not capable of taking red light pictures. They're not capable of, uh, being utilized to issue citations after the fact for unlicensed vehicles or running stop signs. They're not used like, they're, they're not video cameras. These are still image cameras. Um, and again, the only information kept in this image is the, the picture and the point in time and the location. So that, when the deputies run this information, they still have to go back to their own systems and find out the registered owner's vehicle information and the driver's information.
And my last question is, if I borrow your car and I commit a crime, are they gonna do a full investigation or are they gonna go after you?
Well, part of that full investigation wouldn't be to go after me. They didn't, they'd interview me, that's what they would in any investigation. And I'd say, oh yeah, that was, that was Mayor Pro temp Quavis that did that crime.
So there is a full investigation before you blame someone of...
Correct. Well, just, just as in any investigation, there, there's, there's, uh, they speak to witnesses, they speak to the suspects, they interview everybody, they, they gather evidence as, as they would in any case. So, yeah, it, it, it isn't just you're caught guilty because your car was there. Um, but by having this information right away and point in time, they can quickly find the owner of that car and is the case with, with the unfortunate fatal hit run that we had, as you're all aware of. Um, had we had that information quickly, we could have located the owner of that car, found where the car was stored and accessed surveillance footage at that apartment complex before it got purged. So unfortunately, because we didn't have to do this, the deputies had to do legwork where they were going door to door, looking at ring phones, talking to business owners, seeing if they could search their camera and, and going through it. And so it took a lot longer to find the car, so, to find the vehicle owner.
And my last question is, with electronics, we are always updating. What's the agreement of updating the system? If in two, three years something new comes on, are we going to be given the option or is it going to be automatically updated?
Uh, I spoke with Deputy Paul about this at some length. We always have the, uh, the ability to increase the system or decrease it if we choose. Um, as technology gets more advanced, new cameras will be available. We can purchase those new cameras or continue with the ones we have. But, um, yeah, I mean, we can always, we can always upgrade the system.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question with regards to how the information and data is accessed. Is, is it tagged? So like if an officer is looking, uh, from what I understand, they put in the reason, but so it's, the memory or the system, the data that's generated, that's also kept stored? Who's accessed it at one point?
Um, well, I, I think I can answer that question and I'm Sergeant David Chee with the Sheriff's Department, you know, and I, I work with Sam, mainly sign his time sheets, but you know, he does most of the heavy lifting. I show up every once in a while and answer questions. Um, I think you're asking real, your questions related to like auditing, right? So if...
Yes.
Well, first of all, um, as Mike mentioned earlier, uh, th, this data is only accessible by people who, with a need to know and right to know and, and they're, they're all sworn. And it's not any sworn, it's sworn that, you know, that have a need to know. So a, a custody deputy, for instance, would not have access to the system. It would be like, it's someone on patrol. So patrol deputy, detectives, you know, people that have a need to know. Um, and anytime someone accesses the system, there is an audit, there is an auditing feature that, that tracks all of that. And, you know, you have to give a reason. Why am I looking this information up? Is it for a warrant? Is it for a file? Is it for a tag? So that information, all that auditing is, is done. And we all also, our unit also does, um, periodic audits. Just basically looking for all the, you know, all the right criteria, you know, is this person on our approved list? Uh, does he have a right to know and, and what was the reason he, you know, looked up this data? So all that, all that auditing is, is kept and is tracked. I hope that answers the question.
No, definitely. I think it's just, this discussion that we had, we just want to make sure we're, we're asking all the right questions. I don't know that we're asking all the questions that we can be, but, um, I think there was some confusion initially, so this helps clear a lot of that up.
Yeah, and I think it's important for the council to know that, um, in SB 34 and SB 54, um, they're, they're Senate bills. Um, our, our policy is, is pretty, pretty good, pretty tight. It, it's in full compliance with what's already, you know, what's already in those Senate bills. So, um, yeah, the department, I think, does a pretty good job.
Any other questions? I do have a question. Going back to the, to the data, uh, is the data subject to public records requests?
You, well, yes. The answer is yes. Everything, you know, all data is subject to public records requests, but, and we actually had lawsuits related to that because ACLU sometimes will, uh, present something and, and, you know, we, we went through that once with the, with ACLU and with the, um, what is that, their, uh?
EFF.
EFF, yeah. And so they, they wanted access to our ALPO data. We, we said, no, we, we're not going to present to you the location of our cameras. So we anonymized a lot of that, that data for them. Um, but the short answer is yes. It's, it's subject to CRA requests or, uh, public records requests. Uh, but we, we don't just share data with anyone. You gotta have, if, in other words, like if, if someone's going through divorce and then they're gonna, well, where was my, you know, ex-husband during this date and time? Well, well, no, that's not a law enforcement related, you know, request. That's a legitimate request and we're obviously going to deny that. But is it subject to PRAs? Yes, every, all records are subject to it. Uh, but we're not just going to arbitrarily release people's or data without a legitimate law enforcement reason.
Okay, yeah, that was the scenario that I was gonna, that I was gonna think.
Well, I guess correctly.
There wasn't necessarily, um, going through a divorce in my scenario, but they had some issues, right? And so that's what I was wondering.
I've been through a divorce once, so that's the story y'all came up with.
No, I, I got you. So I was just wondering, could just any individual decide, you know, hey, I just want to see what's going on on this block at this point in time for whatever reason?
No, it's a need to know, right to know.
Okay. Okay. And the next question I had, um, so after you delete the information after five years, you said the, the data is deleted. Is there a particular person that's, or process that certifies this, that it has been deleted or confirms or whatever?
So our systems are fully CGIS compliant and we do have a CGIS team that can provide confirmation on deletion and we can, uh, provide additional information for you.
Is that, is that, uh, I didn't hear someone, is that a third party?
Uh, no, no, CGIS is Criminal Justice Information, um, Policy. And, uh, we have a CGIS team that, uh, man, that manages that CGIS policy.
Okay, so this team basically can confirm that the data was, um, deleted?
Absolutely.
And it's not somewhere in the cloud lurking around somewhere?
Yeah, once it's deleted, it's absolutely deleted after the agency's policy. And the agency will set that policy. So some agencies have a two-year retention, some agencies have a five-year retention, but the agency is in full control of that. We Motorola have no access to a customer's data. We don't, uh, we don't commoditize it in any way. We don't access it. So the only thing that we're doing is we're providing a very secure environment for the data, uh, for it to be, um, uh, accessed by appropriate law enforcement. And each individual, um, deputy or any law enforcement officer would have a unique credential for logging in. So I can't log in, um, under Sean's, um, uh, profile because he's not law enforcement, right? So it would have to be all law enforcement and of course, everything is fully audited within the system.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Any other, um, questions? Yes, ma'am.
I thought it was the last question. All this is, uh, admissible in court. So let's say we have a criminal, we catch him, we have the plate, we do everything that needs to be done. It's gonna go with the judge, right? It's not gonna say you did anything illegally.
Well, yeah, this, this is, this is evidence just like any other type of evidence would be, you know, gunshot residue or, you know, shell casings that would be just another piece of evidence. Yeah, yeah, fully admissible.
This is the evidence we needed in that hit and run at the In-N-Out. That would, would, right now, we would have that person in custody.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Unless there's any more discussion on this item?
I'll just say, I'm still pro these cameras. I think that they're the right thing to do for our neighborhoods. It's the right thing to do all the way around. Um, we have to consider this. I think we'll see the break-ins and the theft, thievery that's going on in our neighborhoods lessen because we will, they don't want to be on cameras to come through here. As you can see from that map, all the cities around us have it. So if I'm a little peon that wants to sit in and go and rob somebody's house, I'm sure not going to go to the green area. I'm going to go to the red area because I can get in and out of their house and I'm not on camera anywhere. We need to do this. And I'm so anti-cameras, it's not funny. I have, if I haven't told all of you and if you haven't witnessed being in my car, I have such PTSD over license plate readers, it's not funny. But doggone it, this is what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if any member of the public would like to speak on this item before we deliberate on it any further. Does anyone like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would.
Give us, start with, give us your name.
Oh, Dina, you know.
Just for the record.
I'm asking the City Council to please once again consider the vigilant cameras so we, the City of Longdale, can join the other surrounding cities with this helpful technology. You seem to be stuck on the Big Brother is watching. Well, you go to any store this day and age, there's security cameras up in the ceilings throughout the store. They have cameras over checkouts in most stores to watch customers and cashiers. You have your cell phones keep track of you. You ping your phone, you find your phone, your location if you have an emergency. The airport, more security now than ever. Soon facial recognition, which they will probably store so we can have that quick boarding that we all want. Tech companies advancing in the retina recognition. The surrounding South Bay cities are way ahead of us on technology, which is always, uh, updating too, to help fight crime. The point is, we already watched and recorded, uh, the point is where we are already being watched and recorded, whether you want it or not. This is to assist, assist law enforcement with better technology to help fight crime. I truly believe that Torrance was able to find the vehicle from the mass shooter from Monterey Park last January due to the vigilant camera system. The vehicle was entered into the system and detected in Torrance. What about the Amber Alert system? You guys post license plates on the freeways and everything and what, we're not supposed to, you know, put license plates out there anymore? When you put a license plate for the vigilance, it's more likely to get a hit except if you're coming through Longdale. This is not a speeding camera or a red light camera system. It is a license plate reader. It doesn't show the driver. Again, I wish we already had these cameras when the poor bicyclist was mowed down and killed. No family should have to go through that. The sheriffs could have been on top of that incident. We only have vigilant cameras at this time. Please consider this important tool in fighting crime and public safety. As you know, now we're going into the holiday season as crime trends have changed and the mass, uh, smashing grabs, grab everything you can, hit the door. Yeah, like you say, uh, everybody's got it except for Longdale. So come on, you guys. Focus, get this on. Let's get on board with this surrounding cities and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Randall Abraham, I have questions about both the system itself and some other privacy issues. After the initial cost of over $249,000, will there be other operating costs that the city would absorb if they don't extend it to 10 years? While tonight's proposal is requesting 21 cameras for a city of about two square miles, Torrance has 40 covering over 20 square, square miles with a population of 140,000. How is the number of cameras for Longdale determined? The other vendor mentioned in the staff report recommended only a total... The other vendor mentioned in the staff report recommended only a total of eight cameras. Why the difference? Out of these twenty-one cameras, only nine are fixed locations. Motorola will install only nine of these at four different locations. What happens to the twelve quick deployed cameras? Will they be used for targeted surveillance? Many agencies address using ALPR to canvas license plates around crime scenes, which could result in innocent people stored in the database. The verdict is out on the success, success rate of these license plate readers. While there are incidents of faulty readings of a license plate causing innocent families to be hauled out of their cars at gunpoint, there have been anecdotal stories of retrieval of stolen vehicles and assistance to law enforcement to solve crimes. In March, before Culver City approved their system, they first conducted the required hearing mandated under Senate Bill thirty-four before end of implementation, with notices provided to the community to get their import, input, and they, and they approved their, their system in May. Longdale has not had this type of required public hearing before implementing automated license plate readers. Data needs to be updated quickly, as there have been incidents of stolen cars reported, returned to its owner, and the owner is pulled out later, is pulled over later in a high-risk stop as the data was not updated. Will only law enforcement assigned to Longdale access the system? It's good to hear that Longdale can't have their own separate policy. Assembly Bill fourteen sixty-three has passed a caliber, has passed a California Assembly and is being reconsidered by the Senate. This bill would require ALPR information that does not match information on hot lists be purged in thirty days. Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department retains the data for a lengthy five years. City of Oakland shut down its license plate scanner system in February after a ransomware attack dropped down the system. They will be installing new mounted cameras with a policy that limits storage to thirty days. Dakersfield and Culver City, among other agencies, that have a thirty-day retention period. On October thirty-first, the California Attorney General issued a mandate that law enforcement cannot share data collected from license plate readers with out-of-state or federal agencies. The important issue of privacy can be improved by requiring that data be deleted if it does not match information on hot lists after thirty days. After mention, this is working for other cities, and it should become law in the next couple of months. Access to Longdale's system should be limited only to those assigned to the city of Longdale. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I have, thank you for those public comments that did spark a couple of questions for me. Can anyone speak to the, the issue, the number of cameras Torrance have, which is a much larger city, versus the number of cameras that's proposed for Longdale?
I can speak to that, Mr. Mayor. The, the number was a ragged, because that's what we can afford, the budget subcommittee recommendation of a quarter million dollars. So had we gone with a bigger number, we'd have got more cameras. As far as Torrance, they've had their longer prices change, so they could have got quite a bit more, I don't know how much they spent on their cameras. But for the, for the price that we were given from the budget subcommittee, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's the number of cameras with the warranties, with the installation costs and the trainings.
Not, notwithstanding the, the amount of the cameras, does this suggest that the size of Longdale versus the size of Torrance, that we should have fewer cameras?
Well, keep in mind, with the twenty-one cameras, we're not going to be covering every single road, and the cameras only work in one single direction and one single lane. You can stretch them out to put them in between lanes and possibly catch two lanes with one camera in one single direction. But we have so many ways into the city, we have twenty-one. In fact, if we had two hundred cameras, we wouldn't be covering every road in the city, because you need a single camera for every lane. So twenty-one is what we're starting with, because that was the number we were doing. But with twenty-one cameras, we can cover, get a good number of our major intersections covered. We would likely put them in the recommended spots, and then the first staff report by the Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne, where we could access people coming on and off the four oh five freeway, because there's other ways into the city besides just our, our side streets. So, but as far as the number of cameras, we can always expand on this program, we can, we can go more. Technology does change, so the cost of the, the cameras change as well. But twenty-one was what we thought was a fair number for two, for an introductory program.
So if we have nine fixed, what's, the, the other cameras are mobile? I guess it would be twelve.
Yeah, actually, we're twelve fixed.
Twelve fixed.
Nine are solar. But they, essentially, they would all be fixed. We're not going to be moving them around. Unlike the ones that mount on the vehicle, which we already have, this is going to be fixed, so we're, we're looking to capture vehicles that come into the city specifically. This is for a different purpose than the automatic license plate readers that are mounted to the car, which actually drive around and search for wanted vehicles. These are, these, this is so we can basically put a shield under the city and see everybody that comes in, and we'll know right away if there's, there's a felony wanted car entering the city. As far as for the retention period too, the thirty days, part of the reason that isn't sufficient is because if we, for instance, if deputies arrested someone who was a serial rapist or serial killer, and they found out, they caught him today, and they run his license plate, in fact, we were able to, if we had five-year retention, we could see that, oh, someone solved crimes that happened in Longdale, could be tied to this particular person. So that's, that's the reason for having this long-term. In terms of privacy, like I said, there is no faces, and nobody's images are captured, there's simply pictures of the license plates in the rear of the vehicles, or the front of the vehicles, depending on which direction they're traveling. And the only people that can access that are sworn law enforcement officials, specifically working in specific crime.
So with, so would other cities have like a thirty-day retention policy? How do you, not to speak for them, how do you think they justify having just a thirty-day rather than fifty days?
Well, as I said, that, that would, that would hinder what the purpose of these cameras are for. The hot lists are felony want vehicles, stolen vehicles, and that's good, that's effective. But again, if you're trying to establish a pattern or a long-term case or solve something that, that happened a year ago, if we had purged those, that information, we wouldn't be able to tie that, that criminal act to, to the event from a year before. But, but again, it can, it can all be, it can all be changed, and if you, like, if the council feels comfortable with a shorter retention period, we can speak to Motorola with the ASAP team about shortening that.
And that could be even shortened after we adopt it, or, does that mean like anytime we can change the retention policy?
I, well, it's, it's a live contract, I mean, we would have to, if they're still here. Sergeant Sheen and Deputy Hall, if you may, if you have to.
So I guess the question would be, can we change at, at any time if we feel the need to change the retention policy, or is it set to the duration of the, the contract?
Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, but our, our department's policy is five years of retention, and the, and the data technically would, you know, will belong to the city and, and the Sheriff's Department. I, I don't know if we could retroactively change that retention unless we changed our policy. Obviously, we, we serve other contract cities other than Longdale. But our, our department's policy is the five-year retention. And again, this, this ALPR tool, it's a, it's a very powerful tool, and I'm glad that the city is considering it. There's, there's two sides to this coin, is to catch them now and catch them later. All right, to catch them now is obviously the alerts, the hot lists, and, you know, we catch any guys, anybody that, that has a wanted or stolen car, or anybody with a warrant, we catch that person, catch them now, if it's, if there's an alert. But the other side of that coin is to catch them later. So all the, you know, all the crimes that we spoke of, the, you know, the serial, the serial crimes, the murders, I mean, you know, a body dump, you might not even discover somebody's body until a year later. Well, if the data's already gone, this data is stored in the database and it's, it's, it's inactive, or it's, it's dormant, I guess, if, lack of a better word, it's dormant, until, until, until it becomes evidence. But we don't know what license plates are going to be evidence three years from now. So I, I don't know if we can necessarily change the retention just for Longdale. That's something that I'm going to have to, you know, I guess, ask our policy people, or maybe our county council. But, but our department's policy is five years.
And not just, not changing county-wide for Longdale, just pursuant to our contract?
You have to remember that the system that you're purchasing is for our use. So essentially, the data would be under our control.
Right.
So our department standard is five years. We've been using that for quite some time, and it's been a good balance of, from indefinite to thirty days, so we feel the five years of balance, we, we mirrored LAPD's policy on that, and they found that to be the most valuable. There are other states that have different retention values, but we feel to show pattern of life for body dumps, human trafficking, narcotics, major crime type of the crimes that involve lengthy investigations, this has been the most appropriate timeframe that we feel works for us. So if we were to start, in my opinion, if we were to start switching retention policies based on, on each city's requirements, it would fall outside of our ability to control the information, and then essentially, that system would belong to the city, then you guys should manage it and then allow us access to it at that point. But if you were to buy this tool for our use, then it should maintain our policy standard, because it's our tools.
And, and really, as a cop, if it was up to me, I, I vote for infinite retention, right? Because, you know, what if crime happened ten years ago? If, if it was up to me, I, you know, as a cop, cops, we would like, you know, it to be kept forever. But as Sam mentioned, I think five years is a good compromise, it's a good, it's a good number. Probably most crimes are solved within that timeframe. But, you know, again, there's different agencies with different, you know, different states even have different retention periods. But, you know, and, and I think this was actually even challenged by the ACLU and, yeah, Electronic Frontier Foundation, and, you know, our retention survived that challenge. So it's something that, you know, we kind of fought for and won, and we like to keep that.
Okay. Thank you for that response. And I do have one last question for the city attorneys, might be for the city attorney. It was mentioned that a public hearing is required? I think that's what I was hearing.
So I, I was reading the bill, there, the bill says the ability for public testimony to be given at a public meeting, which is different than a notice public hearing, as the council notes. So that, that ability has come through the meetings that the council has had on the matter. And in addition, it's tricky for contract cities, because you will not actually own the information. The information is, is only accessible to the Sheriff's Department, and obviously, LA County has also gone through the process of having public meetings at which testimony was given. So the other cities that I'm aware of that are contract cities who have gone through this process recently have public meetings, agenda items like the one before you tonight, but did not hold special notice public hearings.
And in this case, we would have had, including this meeting, two meetings on, on this item, because we continued it from the last item. Okay, that's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
I do have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
With regards to the amount of cameras and where they're placed, was that in any way coordinated with the surrounding cities, or is it not, just because they're facing one direction?
Well, with, nothing that we presented is set, so we can still have discussions. Sarge and I just, for our presentation to the council, we, the positions that we felt were optimal, because it covers the largest area in the city and also captures the four oh five at, at Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne Boulevard. But we can, we can, we can move them, they're not, they're not, they, they can be moved, and often we don't want to move them. So we could put them in certain spots if we find, if we find that are not optimal, we can then move them, that's, that's entirely up to the city. We, we choose where to place them. But we, we take in the Sheriff's Department input on that, because they're the ones that are looking at this information. So obviously, hot spots are going to be the spots that we're going to put the cameras at.
I was just curious if, like, the surrounding cities, since they all have the systems, if they already have them in place, if it was necessary for us to also have them? But I know they only face one direction, so.
Yeah, and then again, we could, but again, they also have, every city that borders us has the ability to move their cameras at, at their own will, where they feel they need to.
Okay, very good.
And I think the thirteen locations they picked out are pivotal for the city of Longdale. So if no other questions, I'll make a motion to...
Are there any other questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation of number one, I believe.
Number one.
That's original one?
And I'll second that.
Number one. Okay. So, so the, the motion's been made by currently that we go with staff recommendation, number one, and second by Hawthorne and Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number fourteen, the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
What are you, stopping mosquitoes over there?
Okay. Next item, fifteen. Next item, item fifteen, oh, item fifteen is going to be removed, removed from the, the agenda, and we'll place it on a future agenda. So let's skip, without objection, this, that's okay?
So fifteen's no longer on the agenda?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And we will skip to item sixteen, approval of a contract service agreement with the city council, for the city council chambers. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and city council. Hopefully, this item is a fun item. Staff is really excited about this particular item for you. This will be the beginning of hopefully several upgrades that we could potentially bring forward to, to city council for your approval. So this evening, staff is recommending council's approval for a contract service agreement with Western Audio Visual and Security to upgrade the audio and video systems here in the city council chambers. This project will upgrade the audio equipment, that means all of our current microphones, amplifiers, sound, sound systems, as well as provide a new voting system. So instead of your current voting system that you have right now that's on the dais, this will be a voting touchscreen voting system. We'll also look to change out both the voting board, as well as the projector screen to, we're looking at an eighty-five inch screen. We're also looking to replace all of the monitors that you currently have on your dais area, so now they're functional, and you actually can use them to follow the meetings, follow agendas, as well as vote for any future items that might be presented before you, as well as, let's see if there's anything else. I think that's pretty much what we're looking to do at this point. Staff participated or put out a, a proposal for, to upgrade the, the system, and we received six proposals from six qualified companies, and based on our vetting of the, of the different proposals, we chose Western Audio and Security for this project. During the vetting process, staff actually conducted a site visit to one of their most recent projects, which is the city of Cerritos, and we were really excited about what they did for them there. And so one of the things that we were really excited about was to put forward digital nameplates. So that means that the nameplates that you have currently in front of you, instead of them being the small nameplates that you currently have, they'll actually be digital. That way, the staff is able to monitor it, update it when there's a change in seats, and so it'll, there'll be a digital nameplate for each of the seven dais seats here this evening. They also provided us proposals for additional items. One would be to include, if you would like a larger monitor for your, your station, we're looking at a twenty-two inch, but if you want a twenty-four, there, they provided a proposal for that. If you are interested in increasing the size of the projection screen here, we actually asked for eighty-five, but they can go up to a ninety-eight, if you're interested in that. They also provided us with information as it relates to a new broadcast system for our control room, which we're basically going to put off and maybe bring that back at a later time. Also, an agenda management package that the assistant city clerk really liked, but we'll also have to come back with you on that one as well. So at this time, city staff is actually recommending that you approve the agreement with Western Audio Video, as well as allow us to add to this project, which is the digital nameplates that would be placed at the, the seven dais seats, as well as a, I think we're asking for a two-year extended warranty and maintenance plan for five thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars, as well as a ten percent contingent, contingency, which would bring the total cost of this project to one sixty-three, three fifteen, so that's one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. During the budget process for the 2020 During the budget process for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three process, council approved a hundred and twenty-five dollars for this project. So in order for us to incorporate the additional items that we would like to recommend for this project, we would need additional thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And the, our, our director of finance has looked at the opera funds and believe that this, we can actually use the opera funds in order to pay for this additional items. So at this time, we're hopeful that you will agree to staff's recommendation to approve the contract service agreement with Western Audio Visual and Security in a form approved by the city attorney's office, an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars for the total cost of this, this project, as well as authorize the director of finance, city treasurer, to appropriate additional three thou- thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. This actually was not included in the action items, but I would like to add that to the staff report this evening. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Is the name, the digital nameplates included in this, or is that additional?
It it's the added cost. So the added cost for the digital nameplates is ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-five. So the hundred and sixty-three will include the digital nameplates.
Will the new digital nameplates be able to see us voting instead of having that on the wall?
No, the the nameplates are only for the nameplates. The voting system, the new monitor that would go up there will, you will basically, so the, so the way that it's presented here, where you have the council's name in your, in your vault, it'll actually be up there on that screen.
So that'll be obsolete, correct?
I'm sorry?
That'd be obsolete?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll remove that.
And then I have, do have one request. A monitor, I'd have a fifty-five inch monitor right here.
We won't be able to see your face.
I have to see, I have to squint.
He thinks he's watching football.
Yeah, that's right.
Watching the game.
Yeah, Monday I'd be, no, that's it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can't seem, if if we were to approve this tonight, what are we looking at as far as time before it would actually be in and functioning?
Well, in order for them to place, because of the supply and demand that we've talked about this evening, they won't be able to get the equipment until January. So with that, and they actually need a total of six weeks on site. So they will actually work around your schedule here. We will make sure that we coordinate on times where there's down, downtimes for you here as far as meetings moving forward. But they do need a total of six solid weeks after they receive the equipment.
I have a question. So the monitor that we have now, which never did actually work. I think it worked all of maybe a week or two. It's not the same brand, is it?
No.
Okay, it's not the same brand. Okay, so that's like Top Vision, something, you know.
Yeah, I don't even know that brand.
Yeah, never heard of that. Okay, so it's not that. And what about this device? This haven't worked in since I got here.
The control device? Yes. So your device, as well as the city clerk's device, will be separate from and different from everyone else, but it'll still just be one. And on your screen, you'll be able to control the meeting. So that means that if council wants to speak, they could go ahead and request to speak. You could, you know, control voting as well. So that would be your, it would be tailored directly for only the mayor's seat as well as the city clerk's seat.
Would allow me to turn off, um, Pat Kearney's mic?
Yes, it will.
I'll be watching TV anyways, that's okay. I'll watch a football game.
Right.
Yes, you will be able to control volume as well as turn off the mics.
And do you know, do you know the brand of either one? I'm not like I know these brands, but I just want to make sure it's not the same brand as this. Pangea, I never, I don't know if that's a good brand or not, but this doesn't really work.
Mr. Mayor, council, we can just ensure that it's not these brands.
Yeah, just to make sure it's not those brands.
We'll just make sure staff will make sure that they're not these two brands.
Let's get some brands we've, we've heard of. That's pretty much our only questions I have. I think that's good.
I believe the, the brand is called Planner.
Yeah. You don't have to look it up. Just, I'm just, just wondering.
If there's no questions, I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
So it's been a motion to approve by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the staff recommendation on the motion? All right, seeing that with the staff vote.
For item number sixteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Fifty-five inch.
Fifty-five.
And you can turn this out.
Okay, we did that.
Okay, we have a seventh.
Okay. Now, with the city manager's report.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll be brief. As Mr. Gould and the residents in the adjacent row area concerned about the ongoings out there, just, just wanted to update the council that we've been out there daily. I've had the sheriffs out there, the SAOs, with Mr. Gould to keep the peace because, you know, at times when Metro was there, there seemed to be some miscommunication. I'll just leave it at that. We, as you know, I've sent several emails, but we'll work with, I'll work with the city's attorney's office to come up with another strongly worded email to Metro. But we definitely told them, I did tell them, we don't appreciate, you know, the ongoings that went on out there because when they originally, they went out there, it was for the pipeline, and then we were told they wanted to light our the property in addition for the, on the gravesites, which none of that was told to the city staff. We have the email. So we have been on bird dogging it on a daily basis. I keep in touch with Jay almost seven days a week during this process. And I did, and I guess I'll just let this, you know, Jay called me on Saturday and mentioned, this hasn't been verified, but apparently, the mobile company, because there's several pipelines out there, they mentioned to Mr. Gould that they have a twenty-five year lease with Metro and that they know nothing about relocating the, though, that the fuel line to accommodate the green line. So it sounds like Metro has not been doing their outreach as we've all experienced here at the city. So hopefully, they meet with the mobile people and get that resolved. But according to Mr. Gould and other folks, mobile said they are not moving their line, and there's nothing in the lease with Metro. So I find that all pretty interesting. We've been also, staff and myself have been working on the one sixty-two area where the, we have some of the encampments on the Caltrans area. We have to be very careful. When the homeless, I just want the council to be aware, when the homeless dump their stuff on our right of way, we can grab it. We give them time to pick it up. If they leave it there day after day, then we, Leia and staff go out there with the, you know, and I'll go out there too. Because the, the folks there get a little rowdy and aggressive toward staff. So sometimes, without having to have the sheriff stand guard, we'll go out there and grab that stuff if they throw it out there and they abandon it. So I just want the council to be aware that we're keeping an area. That seems to be a most problematic area. Mr. Reyes and his staff, they continue with the outreach daily. I just want to bring up that some of the, there's new faces throughout, but right now, they seem to be passing through on our security guard. I've been working with them to get them services or move them along. And vendor enforcement. I did get complaints from the residents and a council member. So I sent you an email today. The sheriffs reached out to Environmental Health to regulate the vendors, even in the county areas. So they're going to go out there. There's an email. They're going to go out and do it in Longdale, as well as the county areas, to work with the vendors and to get them into compliance and move them down a little bit away from our resident. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have the council report. That's from Councilman Hafman.
All right, now I've got to remember everything that is in my brain at the moment. Okay, since the last council meeting, I attended the coffee with the cops, and that was a great turnout. If anybody missed that, that was a wonderful event. Thank you, Michael, for all your hard work on doing that. And I second what Bernadette said about maybe organizing a coffee with the captain because I would love to introduce her to our residents. I also attended the Contract Cities meeting for October. And I attended the Halloween Haunt, which I hope that all of you were able to attend. Mike Estes and his team does an absolutely fabulous job putting that on. And I think every year it grows. And every year, I'm just astonished that that line goes almost out to Hawthorne Boulevard waiting with trick-or-treaters looking to to enter. So good job to both of of those departments. I also attended on the city's behalf the Losinger High School ribbon cutting of the athletic field. And I, as a cardinal, did not step out on the field because it was Losinger. And so I stayed away as well as my other cardinal. We let the Losinger Olympians get in the photograph for 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 their event. But yes, I was there, and it was a nice event. And I do have one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and this is just a suggestion. Now that we finally have a new captain in place, my suggestion is that the committee that meet, that had the meeting last fall or early spring, when we got together with Caltrans and the CHP, and since, they made a whole bunch of promises at that time with us for the CHP on assistance with our homeless. And since then, all of us have heard crickets. And I don't know, I know city staff has reached out to the CHP with no luck. And I myself have reached out many times to the CHP with no luck. I'm just wondering if, now that we have a new captain, if that couldn't be something that maybe we should again address because now we have a captain and a lieutenant and a sergeant all here. And I'm sure, as we learned the other day, our new captain also has a commander above her. And I would suggest that they all get in. And I would have loved to have had this suggestion while Tina was sitting here because I think there's something of a push that needs to come from the other ed- on the other end for Caltrans and for the Highway Patrol. But I think another meeting would really be helpful. Thank you.
Very good.
Mayor, just clarification. Would you like me to invite Commander Figaro as well? I know we have Commander Rector, but maybe Figaro would be very helpful.
I would like to have them both there.
Okay.
Very good. Yes, sir.
Okay. I also attended a coffee with the cops. Mike did a great job. One deputy was getting hammered by William Green School. The parents are there. I'm sorry for that. I attended the twenty twenty-three ethnic training. Our city manager put it on. He did a great job. Very boring, but great job. I believe four of us attended the senior lunch. That was well attended.
Ron did not. Go ahead.
Yeah, it was great. We had a Hermione from, yeah, whatever that place, that, very proud of that. And then we, and then we had, she changed, didn't she? Who were you? Yeah. There. Robert came as my, me, and I came as him. They couldn't tell the difference.
No, they couldn't.
I attended the Halloween Haunt. It was fantastic, as always. I also attended a ribbon cutting ceremony at that school across Hawthorne. I want to tell you, the best thing in that whole complex is the baseball field. It is immaculate. If I had to go to that school, I'd play baseball there. But it was, I even stepped on the field. I had a hats, math suit on, but I stepped on the field. And it was great. And also, I want people to remember that this weekend is Veterans Day, and we should have our flags out there. Don't be afraid, I believe it's this weekend?
Correct.
And don't be afraid to buy a flag for twenty-five dollars and put a loved one, you know, a tomb with unknown soldier, I do, M.I.A.P.O.W.s out there. Purchase a flag and have your name put on there for the, all the veterans coming this weekend. And with that, I pass it on.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I attended Coffee with the Cop as well, the ethnic training, senior lunch for Halloween, the Halloween Haunt. I think Pat sorted off for those very great events. And then today, I had a South Bay City's Council of Government Steering Committee. We had a speaker, David Slaton, from the Executive Officer Clerk of the Court Superior Court, who talked about the zero bail policy that went to effect and the pre-arrangement protocol and how that's implemented. And then we did have four residents speak regarding the Metro Green Line and why a position hasn't been taken yet. They also went over that for the homeless services, that there is another ballot measure for Measure H. It's going to repeal the original, and the new one will have no end date, but it is going to increase sales tax for that and funding. So that's something to look out for. And then I did want to bring up, and this might be something, SB one three eight three, I think that's what it is, Local Assistance for Food Recovery. The food waste, organic waste. I guess there's grants out there. And we all got an email, so I wanted to check and see who's doing the education for that currently. Is it the trash or the waste haulers or?
I'll, I'll have Public Works look into that and get back to the council.
Yeah, because they're.
On that requirement, it'd probably be re- republic. But we would definitely, I'll get back to you on that and get you an answer.
Okay, because if not, and if we're required to do it, the cog is seeing if cities want them to do it regionally. And and that way, they can help apply for the grant and then also facilitate it. So I thought that's something we might want to look into. And then just another note is the December eleventh meeting will also act as, the December eleventh steering committee will also act as the Board of Directors meeting. There's no evening meeting for the end of the month due to the holiday. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
I attended the Longdale Senior Halloween Luncheon. And then I did a change in costume for the Longdale Halloween event. I want to thank staff for both events. They were great. I had fun with the seniors. I, that was my first luncheon to be at. And after lunch, I hung around with a few of them. Very nice ladies, full of life. I also attended the Losinger ribbon cutting of the athletic field. I did step on the field, even though I liked Longdale better than Losinger, but I had to do it. The field is great. It's like walking on grass. So hopefully, all of our other high schools will get the same type of, of fields out of our bond or measure am, I think, one of the, whatever we voted for, for Sentinel Valley School District. They are, they are doing a great job of updating these fields. And that was it.
You didn't tell them what you came as. You came as Dave's Hot Chicken, right? That night.
Is that what that was? Dave Hot Chicken?
Dave's Hot Chicken, yeah. Or Chick-fil-A.
That was Chick-fil-A.
All right, pour your logo.
Compero, yeah. Pour your Compero, yeah.
All right. Well, at least you didn't have a rooster with you. Or, or did you?
That's true. No, I didn't have the rooster. It was just the chicken.
All right, no roosters. Okay. So Councilwoman, you mentioned that a measure that's going to increase the sales tax. I didn't get that, that measure.
I don't know that has a name, but it's supposed to replace Measure H.
But what it brought to mind when we made a decision to increase the, the sales tax in Longdale, which was a, a bold move. But the reason why we did that, because we knew as sooner or later, the county or some other entity, taxing entity, was going to grab that extra tax that the state allows you, and that the money would be diverted from the city of Longdale. But we still would be paying the price, you know, at the register or what have you. So that was a wise decision we made some time ago. Even though, you know, no one likes to pay, you know, some additional tax. But by God, if some other entity is going to impose that, we'd rather for that money to stay in the city of Longdale for its taxes, its concern, sales taxes concern. So I just wanted to, thank you for bringing that up.
And just to piggyback, because you brought it up, the measure isn't going to guarantee that those funds will come to the city like our tax measure does.
Absolutely. So I did attend the mayor's cup, the annuals mayor's cup between Losinger Olympians and the Hawthorne, was it Cougars?
Cougars.
Hawthorne, Cougars. Of course, the Olympians once again walked away with the trophy. I should say, ran away with the trophy because by the time halftime came, you basically could have went home. So we were basically just, they're just to support. At the, at that point, they had to let So we were basically just there just to support, at that point, they had to let the clock run out. You know, what's it called, run the clock out? Yeah, run the clock out. I can't remember the score.
Fifty-six or fifty-eight to nothing. It was high.
It was something like that.
It was a LuZinger show.
After about forty or so, we, we kind of stopped counting after about forty.
I think so, yeah.
Something like that, you know. Yeah, and so much so that my understanding is that Hawthorne is changing divisions, so they will never play LuZinger, LuZinger again. So I don't know if it has anything to do with the Mayor's Cup, but they are changing divisions, and so that was the last Mayor's Cup for Hawthorne in a LuZinger because of the division change. I'm not sure how that works, but maybe they'll have another Mayor's Cup and beat the other team or what have you.
That's been around almost thirty years since Larry Guidi was the mayor of the city of Hawthorne and my dad.
That was the last, because they're going to change schools, divisions from what I understand. I did also attend the Halloween Hunt, I want to thank the, the staff for such a great event. I mean, this is one of our premier events. The weather was really nice this year, no sweater was needed, you know, this year. And so, and the kids had a, a great time, and the entertainment was wonderful. You know, everything was wonderful, and I just want to thank Mike Estes and his team, all the staff and the volunteers on the commissions or what have you, for their participation, that was really great. Speaking of LuZinger, I also attended the Athletic Fields dedication, and you're right, the fields, it's the baseball diamonds. Nice, you know, I forgot to take a picture on the baseball diamond.
I know.
Go back over there. And the football fields, nice, including the, we also took a tour of the, the training facilities. That was nice to see, and they just did just a A-one job, you know, on, on the fields. And congratulations to LuZinger for fabulous on fields. And I have one thing I wanted to bring to the attention of the, the mayor. So a few nights ago, I believe this is our, and this is kind of weird, I believe this is our patrol company? Because they, I'm not going to say which street, but they passed by and it was at night, probably late at night, lights off, and they're driving slowly. They took one pass, then they came back around, took another pass with the lights off slowly. I'm thinking, hmm, that seems kind of weird. Not really sure what that was about, seeing that that was at, at night with lights out. It seemed like it could be kind of dangerous to me. You know, if you're rolling up on someone and the lights are out, you know, and it's, you know, at least ten o'clock at night or whatever, that, you know, I don't know if they're going to wait to see what you, you know, what, what you're rolling on them, up on them about or what have you, because it was just really kind of strange, I just happened to be sitting in my car and it was about that time, so I don't know what that was about.
Well, I'll have Mr. Reyes contact them tomorrow, and then we'll find out and get back to the council on that.
Yeah, this is a couple of days ago, okay. I just thought I would bring that up, because that was kind of weird. Other than that, that's all I have to report.
You have to mention about the culinary academy at LuZinger.
Oh, yeah.
Tacos, tacos and cookies. Robert had his fill.
Uh, yeah.
But it was very good.
It was good.
And FYI, I believe Hawthorne's only school playing in the CAF playoffs, other two got knocked out last week. So Longdale, LuZinger is at home watching Hawthorne play in the playoffs.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
LuZinger beats Hawthorne.
Right.
That's such a mess.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Uh, okay, with that in mind, we do have a few closed sessions. Three to be exact. And I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us provision of the closed session.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Council will now go into closed session under Government Code five four nine five seven point six to confer with the labor negotiator, also under five four nine five six point nine D four to discuss potentially initiating one piece of litigation, and under five four nine five six point nine D one to discuss currently existing litigation. Thank you.
Okay, we will go into closed session.
Yeah.
I mean, it was all set up.
Yeah.
Very often.
But again, it's not like...
So... Well, they're living in... You can't... They're just... Uh... No, you... They don't... They don't... I don't think so. Oh, two of them. And... Look for me. Look. Kind of like the... The... Yeah. He's got a lot of... If he already has... He's got so... He doesn't have to say how much. How much? No. No, he's... He's got it all. He doesn't need to change that. He doesn't... He doesn't want to... Yeah. He's already... That's all. Oh, I know. Where... Oh, where... But they don't like your service. Or... Yeah. They don't like you.
Okay, we've returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the conference with labor negotiator, the city council was briefed and no reportable action was taken. As to the anticipated litigation, the council was briefed. There was recusal as is appropriate under the law and no reportable action was taken. As to the existing litigation, direction was given to the city attorney's office to defend the matter on behalf of the city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, November 20th in these council chambers. It is now 9:29 in Wearger.